Right now. Okay, I'll call the order to Sparks City Council Meeting of 10:23:17 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini, absent. Council members Abbott, Lawson, Smith, Bybee, Dare, Acting City Manager Kronk, City Attorney Adams. We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you'll all stand for the invocation speaker today is Pastor Omar Palmer from Sparks Seventh Day Adventist Church. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Please join us as we pray. Our heavenly Father, Almighty God, we come in humility, appreciation and acceptance of your goodness to us as a city and as a nation. We ask for your full presence in our midst this afternoon as we deliberate as the members of council, make decisions as the public will seek to advise. We pray that your hand will be in the midst of everything. You have privileged us, Lord, with this opportunity to serve. And so we ask that you will take control of what we do and may it bring glory to your name. We can't help but think about the mayor who's not here. Pray that you may administer your healing touch upon him and may your power be felt within his lives and his family. Please take full control, Lord, in everything that goes on here and may this city become and continue to be an example to the nation and to the world of what good deeds can be and what it accomplishes. We pray all this in your mighty and powerful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If you remain standing for the Hudge of Legion, Mr. Kronk, would you lead us today?
Yes, sir. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public for comment. Anybody wishing to speak at this time, please fill out a card, turn it into the clerk. First, you get three minutes. First up is Anonymous, welcome. Come on down and then make sure that we have new microphones so they actually make sense, but make sure it's green.
Oh, somebody did that for me. Thank you, whoever did. Mayor, council members, I'll just pick up where I left off. Do I need to push a button? This one? Left? Reports are, this is Heidi Shaw, she's the City of Sparks Court Administrator. She is the one who is illegally destroying child abuse court case files. She's using this as her authority, the minimum records retention schedule. This is a Nevada Supreme Court document that was generated in 1988. This was before the courts went to electronic systems. And so it was basically a guide, and again, I bring your attention to the word "schedule." It's just a schedule, it's not a Nevada revise statute, it's not case law. It is simply a schedule to give guidance to court administrators on how long to keep child abuse court case documents. As you can see on these documents, six years, six years for criminal cases, and that's, that is not a correct, that isn't, that is not in accordance with Nevada revise statutes because a criminal case in domestic violence has to have seven years between the event and the next event. So if you're destroying domestic violence court case files in six years, then that person will be charged again as a misdemeanor. In the state of Nevada, they have to keep the records at least seven years so that then by the second event, it's a gross misdemeanor and by the third event, it's a felony. We believe this is Janine Baker. She is the Justice Court Administrator here in Sparks, and she too is illegally destroying child abuse evidence. And her, this memo states that she's keeping records, a minimum of, excuse me, she's retaining records six years. Again, I'd like to draw your attention that this document that she's citing is just a minimum, it's just the minimum. She says conservatively in her memo, that it's, conservatively, it's six years. No, conservatively, in a minimum records retention schedule, conservative is permanently, keeping the child abuse records permanently. This is simply a guideline for how the minimum standard is. And again, the reason this guy-
Can I wrap it up?
Okay. And again, the reason this guide has not put in their NRS 11, which is all protected classes in Nevada, that's statutorily, the elderly are protected, minors are protected, and the disabled are protected. So none of these guidelines apply to any protected classes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Darlene Hesse. Welcome Darlene, how you doing?
Hello, everyone, I'm Darlene Hesse, and I'm concerned about Wild Creek Golf Course very, very much. My husband and I were looking at the traffic this morning and we just do not understand how that McCarran can handle any more traffic. It was like bumper to bumper for one whole hour. And I don't know, maybe some of you guys, you probably live in Sparks and don't have to deal with it, going to Reno, but it's just unbelievable. I cannot imagine a school being on that property and having all that traffic. That's just gonna be, we have the improvements on Pyramid from six lane and now it goes into four lanes for McCarran. I mean, and it's, looks real pretty on McCarran, you know, and turn the corner right by the church. I can't imagine them being able to put six lanes in there, but it's gonna back that traffic up, it's gonna just be the most horrible situation. Another thing too, I'm so concerned about this beautiful property being taken away because if anything, it should be always, it's open space, and I thought Reno and Sparks were always here to take care of open space and not do damage to it. And this golf course is a lovely area and it's been there for years. I played on that golf course before, years and years ago when I was a child. I've been, I'm a citizen of Sparks, Nevada, citizen of Nevada. But anyway, I just cannot believe what's gonna happen to this golf course if there's a school built. The school should never be built on a flood plain, that's gonna be an endless problem. I keep saying it over and over again, but what I read, you know, from Houston, Texas, where they say, you never build, you should not be building on flood plains. And I believe that that will be an endless problem for everyone here in Sparks. And all these kids being bussed in, I mean, when's it gonna stop? And my husband was talking about the schools that are, you know, trying to build the state of the art schools. He said, sometimes, you know, you wanna, you wanna drive a Cadillac, but all you can afford is a Chevrolet. And by gosh, he's right, because you don't wanna waste all this money on this ground, this hilly ground, tear this $30 million golf course apart. And I'd like to know where the fiduciary responsibility is for this. Who's going to, is, are we never gonna get paid back for any of this that we've paid for, for years? And now, the, pretty soon, the water will all be paid for, and that golf course is capable of making a lot of money. I go there all the time and check to see how many people are over there. And there's many people, but it doesn't look like they have one thing on their calendar. And I'm just wondering, why? Why are all these people playing on the golf course and there's not one thing listed on their calendar? I mean, it doesn't seem kinda correct to me. But anyway, thank you for listening, and I just hope that everyone gets together and stops this, this is insanity. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Kim Tracy. Welcome, Kim.
Hi, I'm speaking on the same subject. I know some of you got the handout there about the town hall meeting that we've organized. And I'm hoping that at some point, or I'm wondering if at any point, if all of you can start feeling what the community feels and acting less like government officials, and I know that sounds a little brash, I don't mean it harshly, but I can tell you, I've passed out thousands of those flyers myself, and between us, you know, we've got a lot. And I have not, in all honesty, hand on the Bible, come across a single person in this community who thinks building on that golf course is the smart thing to do. Not a single person I have spoken to wants to see that golf course destroyed in a high school there. Everybody agrees we need schools? Nobody, nobody, not a single person has agreed with that site selection. I understand that Mr. Etchard feels like he's on a time crunch because of double sessions. Again, I'll argue that point, saying that Hug High is not at capacity nor is Reed or Sparks one of them, so if double sessions is an issue, ship the kids to one of those schools, take an extra year, spend the money wisely. Not a single dime has been sent and spent on vetting any of the other sites, not a single dime, yet almost $200,000 on this site because it looked that was the one he wanted. That's not how we want our money handled. And I know this decision doesn't fall in your lap, but we all know that you guys can exercise a great amount of influence in this decision-making process, and we're hoping that you'll look at it like the citizens of the community look at it. I mean, I've gone door to door and spoken, I've had people sign the petition that are teachers at Hug High, who said this is the most ridiculous thing that they've heard of. They don't want the school built there. So I'm hoping that for once, you'll act like just a member of the community and feel it out for yourselves, actually feel it out for yourselves. We can spend some more money, take an extra year if we have to, bring in mobile buildings into Hug High if we have to, all that's been done in the past. There are many things that can be done. Mr. Etchard says that that land on either side of TMCC has spoken for, well, a gym isn't gonna take 60 or 70 acres, and I know Richard J. now wants to put a soccer field on the other side, again, that doesn't take 60 or 70 acres. And the other argument was that that land is too hilly. I don't know if you've ever driven past the golf course, but it's not exactly flat either. It's very hilly, it's gonna require grading. So the arguments all fall short. And every time we come up with another one, we come up with another explanation from Mr. Etchard that he supposedly has, like a third-party member for the C-MAR process. That didn't exist when we went to the first Oversight Committee Protection Funding Committee, sorry, it's a long name. That person didn't exist. So I would like you to really go out in your community and ask for yourselves, what do you want? What do you think? Instead of just listening to the few of us that have time to come here for one reason or another, because I really have been asking honestly, and nobody agrees with this decision, not a single person I've come across. That should weigh heavily on your minds because you are the people who are supposed to be looking out for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, next Kathleen Shep. Welcome Kathleen.
Good afternoon, I'm Kathleen Shep, and I live on the, on the east side of the Wild Creek Golf Course. I'm here to plead in our case for retaining it as an open space, as a golf course, as a green space. There's a lot of loss here. If they were to tear it up and put a school in there, there's a loss of golf holes. They had figured about 99 holes of golf would be lost in this area in the past few years. There's a loss of the green space, there's a loss of animal habitat and bird habitat, and there are, a lot of the raptor birds call that home as well. There's the flooding issue. It's also in an earthquake zone, it's in the flight paths, the traffic is horrible already, and it's gonna get worse. The grounds are probably polluted with chemicals because they've been maintaining the greens out there. We figure that there's gonna be an increase of crime in our neighborhood because that just kinda goes hand in hand with, with high schools. I did download a study on that, and it is a great increase. I don't understand how it is that the school board can just name an area and say, we want that, and it can be handed over to them. I think that whatever laws or statutes there are that allows that, really need to be looked at more closely as well. In all of my going out to get petitions signed, I have now finally had one person tell me that they didn't want to sign the petition. Everyone else that I've spoken to wants to sign the petition, they don't want the school there. And it's not just golfers, it's people on the streets as well. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Wesley Griffin. Come on down Wes, how are ya?
Hello again, esteemed members of the Sparks City Council. I'm here also to speak in favor of saving Wild Creek. And you've all got your color copy of the, of the poster for the town hall meeting. This is, this is gonna be an extremely important town hall meeting for our whole community. We're gonna be, we're gonna hear some speakers talk about how putting a school on Wild Creek Golf Course will affect the health of golf for years to come. You've already heard, you know it. If these, if this is approved, we'll have lost 99 holes of golf in the last few years. And it's gonna have some very, very severe restrictions on people trying to play golf and being able to afford to play golf in our area. We're also gonna be talking about WC-1 accountability. I know you all read the news, you've seen where on the operating side, Washoe County School District is $40 million behind. We've just seen them come up with a school where they were 50% over budget on three schools, total of $69 million. There's problem after problem that is faced, that we're faced with here. One of the things that concerns me too is the way our government is acting. We all heard on the news recently what happened when they had a town hall meeting up at Arrow Creek. People showed up and were able to at least express their problems with being a school there. You know, maybe we don't like to hear, maybe people that are trying to build these schools don't like to hear these things, but we're supposed to be living in a democratic society, I thought, you know? And it's not supposed to be neat and tidy. People are supposed to be able to come out and say what's going on. This whole thing was done under the radar, there was no Plan B. It was mentioned in the RSCVA meeting, if you had a private business that come in and are gonna try to spend $200 million of a, of a private corporation's money without even so much as a Plan B, you'd be fired, you'd be laughed out of the place. Why are we accepting that? Why? Pete Eckert, the COO, and one of his staff members publicly said before the last little sham report that was put out, that there was no Plan B. And when we expressed our concern about that, voila, we come up with Plan B. And now there's, now there's not only Plan B, but there's also nine other plans. What would happen if this was happening in Reno? Would the Reno City Council approve this, where they're trying to take away recognition space and green space of their citizens? I don't think so. And I would encourage you to look very closely at our regional plan. This is in violation of our regional plan. Thank you.
Thanks Wes. Okay, next up is Bill Wagner. Come on down, Bill.
Mr. Mayor-to-be, City Council. My name is Bill Wagner, and I'm dealing with case PNC 17-0032. I want everyone to know I'm not opposed to putting a cul-de-sac with single-family homes on that property. What concerns me is the condominiums, apartments, townhouses, the size of the buildings, the number of people that will be involved there, number of cars. I can't read my writing very well. On a small, teardrop land. I want to thank you all once again for listening to me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. Two seconds.
Okay, one, two. Turn the microphone on. There you go.
The last thing I wanted to mention is that, what, an example of what I was talking about is that everybody I spoke with basically said to me, we don't want the golf course there, I mean, we don't want the school there, but the government does what they wanna do. And, and they don't listen to us, and they always just barge ahead and do exactly what they wanna do. And I would like you guys to consider this an opportunity to turn the public's opinion around and maybe do it differently this time. Thank you.
I thought you were gonna say something nice about us. I didn't let you talk.
I, the judgment's out so far.
Well, I think you're almost.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council. Agenda, anybody wanna pull anything, looking for a motion? Does anybody wanna approve the agenda? Oh, Mr. Lawson, sorry, I forgot where I'm at.
You gotta look around.
I know, I'm waiting to hear, Mr. Lawson.
I wanna approve the agenda, move to approve the agenda as presented by staff.
We have a motion and Mr. Abbott?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, okay. Minutes, consideration discussion, possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council Annual Reports Workshop of September 25th and the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of October 9th, 2017. Mr. Dare?
I'm moving to approve the minute.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, unanimously. Okay, number seven, announcements, presentations, recognition items and items of special interest. The first one on the board is accommodation for Mr. Vance Mars. Would you come down Vance? I am so excited about this because, not that we had the floods, but we had somebody like you step up to the plate. And I'm gonna ask you exactly if you had to do anything to your trucks to, for what you did, if you had to adjust them or just fill them with sand. So before I read this, in our, in our floods in January and February this year, you know, we're down there, we've got sandbag stations throughout the city. And if you've ever had to fill sandbags, you know it's a backbreaking job, and it's, you know, it doesn't matter if you're 20 or 70, you gotta fill your own sandbags. And a lot of people, especially elderly people, can't do it. So here comes Vance in these cement trucks full of sand, puts the chute down, and we're filling the sandbag every seven seconds. Is that about, close enough? So he uses ingenuity to do that. I've been talking about it since February, I can't believe it took us this long to, to do this proclamation. And I would like to see you be the leader and get all these cement truck owners in there. I mean, it's, it's amazing to me. So let me read this, Vance. For being an outstanding member of our community and your sincere willingness to help during our time of need throughout the 2017 flood events, we had two of them. The City of Sparks thanks you and 3D Concrete for your dedication to the service, to the City of Sparks. May you enjoy great health and happiness, and, and we appreciate so much what you did. I thought it was great. So tell us about that, Vance.
Actually, me and Andy, I got a hold of Andy, and we've got a special mix that we use, and it's just, it's a slurry. And I just decided, I'm like, I'm bringing the trucks, 'cause everybody's hands were full, right? I'm gonna bring the trucks down anyhow, so we're gonna use them or not use them and see what happens. And then once, once everybody got trained on, don't touch the truck, just let us do that. And it went, I mean, it was, it was, it was quick, right? So it's, and, and for us, I mean, it's, this is where we all call home, right, is Sparks. So it's, it's simple for us, right? So it's, it's one of those that I think the other, I would hope the other ready-mix companies would step up, and to me, it's, it's, it's just a simple, it's a simple tool that we have. We've got plenty of the trucks, and if it's raining that bad, they're all busy, so.
Yeah, they're pouring some in.
So, no, it's, it worked, and I was happy it worked, so.
Well, you know, we got calls throughout the floods from older people, water's coming up my driveway, I can't do anything about it, it'd be great to put those trucks in those streets too and just fill up some bags real quick, get them, get them sandbagged and then move on.
Yeah, well, it's a lot easier, I mean, it's a lot easier for us to put a truck somewhere than it is to, to put stations up, right, wherever you guys need them.
Yep, absolutely. Any comments or questions for Vance? I'm so proud of you, I really am, what you did. So let me give you this. That's good stuff.
Made that a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, 7.2, presentation from the RSCVA Annual Update. He said, what, 90 minutes, half, hour and a half? Okay. Mr. Delone, thank you, and Ben?
It is so nice to be here, thank you for your invitation to present before the Sparks City Council today. For the record, Phil Delone, President and CEO of the Reno-Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, and Ben McDonald, Manager of Communications. Next slide, thank you. For everyone's refreshment, the core mission of the Reno-Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority is to bring tourism, conventions and visitation to this northern Nevada region. We represent Sparks, Reno, and North Lake Tahoe, Nevada, and the hotels and lodging facilities in that region. And our core mission is to market the area through marketing and tourism advertising, convention sales, and the promotions of special events and attractions. Business is good right now in our region. This slide gives you a snapshot at the average daily rate that is charged by all of the resorts, hotel, hotels and lodging facilities in the area. You can see a distinct climb in average daily rate from 2015, when it was just hovered above $88, to the close of last fiscal year ending June 30, 2017, at an average rate of $101.75. And if you wish to make note, we have forecasted that the average daily rate in this fiscal year will top $105.34, so the trend continues to climb. Taxable hotel revenues in lodging, again, that same trend as the previous slide shows through here. Taxable revenues have climbed from $241 million in 2015 and closed this fiscal year at $306 million. And here again, we forecast for 2017 and 18 taxable revenue at $321 million. And here again, we forecast for 2017 and '18 taxable revenue at $321 million. Cash occupied room nights, these exclude comps. Again, we had $2.71 million room nights in 2015. This climbed to just over $3 million this past fiscal year. And here again, it will grow to $3,47,000 room nights into fiscal year 2017, '18. We focus right now on four primary objectives. Visitation and destination awareness. We want people to know and be appreciative of the Lake Tahoe, Sparks, and Reno area. We are responsible for direct room night growth for our region. We also manage four distinct facilities, which we'll touch upon later, and we are responsible for the facility efficiency of those. And we employ a number of people, so we have a responsibility for organizational stability. This will give you a snapshot, if you've not seen it, of our new marketing program. This is a billboard next to a freeway in Los Angeles, California. The new coloring, the new Reno-Tahoe brand. And our goal here was, through our advertising agency, was to uplift the image of the area and give it a little more classier tone. And so, to show you another example of that, next slide. This is also in downtown Los Angeles. This plays upon our outdoor recreation for the region. And if you can take a moment, we'll show you a sample of an advertisement that we use online.
The path to the top is never straight. Heck, there's rarely even a path, and it certainly isn't forged by me-tos, wait-for-me's, or tag-alongs. Nope. Achieving great things demands great ambitions, a hunger inside to see more, to do more, to be more. And this place, more than any other, rewards those who heed its call. To rule yourself, throw caution to the wind, and go for gold. Inspired by the majesty of mountains converging on high desert, where there's beauty and contrast of old and new, heritage and progress, wildlife and urban grid, this is where worlds collide. This is where America's largest alpine lake meets the biggest little city in the world. This is where anything is possible. If you have the desire to dream and the tenacity to get there, no apologies. Sure, there'll be doubters. They'll call you rebel, rule-breaker, and risk-taker, but they can't muzzle a maverick. You live to be among the first, to try something new, to catch magic moments. Wait for tomorrow? No way. Stake your claim today, and when you reach the top, stretch your fingers to the sky. Yeah. Who's laughing now?
Thanks, Ben. Hope you enjoyed that. That commercial lends itself to the millennial crowd, and that is a market segment we're distinctly going after. To support visitation in this area, air service is very important, and air service has been climbing over the last number of years. We support air service financially through two distinct arms. The first is the Regional Air Service Corporation, that's commonly known as RASC, that's the acronym that you'll hear. And that is a public and private partnership made up of the various tourism entities in, at the lake, as well as here in the valley, as well as a number of hotel partners as well. And that provides a pool of money to support existing air service, as well as to provide incubation for, for new air service, considering the region. The RSCVA also has a separate air service fund, used for the same purposes, but it's only funded by our agency. We, right now, fund it up to about half a million dollars and are growing that to 1.5 In the last nine months, we've enhanced our sales efforts. Conventions are a lucrative market for us. Conventions provide a high average daily rate, profitable food and beverage revenues, and typically a high level of ancillary spending. In addition to the sales staff here at the RSCVA housed at our headquarters on South Virginia Street, we also now have seven people working remotely. We've had offices in Washington, DC. There are two people there, and they solicit and create relationships and turn those relationships into tentative and then definite bookings for the 3,000 associations that are headquartered in Washington. And as I said, we have two people there. We've had an office in Denver for some time, Portland, and San Diego. And in the last couple of months, we've added Atlanta because the southeast becoming home to a number of large national corporations, as well as associations. And we've also opened an office in Sacramento, California. Sacramento and the northern California region continues to be our number-one market contributor. This slide's interesting. This is our new look when we go on the road. Our salespeople attend a number of industry trade shows. We debuted our new Reno-Tahoe booth, a 20-by-20-foot booth, at the American Society of Association Executives in Toronto. And, next slide, please. I think you'd be interested in seeing our seven-foot-long model of the region, including Lake Tahoe there on your left, as well as the city skyline, Sparks, and to the east, the Tahoe-Reno industrial complex. You'd be amazed how many people were attracted just to our model. It was like watching kids come to see a new toy. And then executives from other convention authorities around the United States, there were three guys from Birmingham, Alabama, walked up, and all three of them said at once, "We're going to get one of those." And it was really the hit of the show and stopped a lot of traffic at our booth. Next slide, please. Growth in visitation in our destination is more than just convention sales and more than just free independent travelers visiting. The turn travel segment for both domestic tourism, as well as international tourism, has been neglected for a number of years during the recession. We've made a significant change there. That was instigated by hiring a gentleman named Art Jimenez as our Executive Director of Tourism Sales. Art spent 17 years as the Senior Director of Leisure Sales at the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority, and he's really hit the ground running and put more adrenaline into the veins of our team. One of the things we're focusing on, on the international level, is the Chinese market. Mainland Chinese citizens are now able to travel more freely, and they can get multi-year visas to the United States to travel. And I think as a footnote, you'd be interested to know that on the west coast of the United States, there are now 49,000 air seats a week coming nonstop from mainland China into Los Angeles, the San Francisco Bay Area, and Seattle. I was at an international travel show that was held in March, and I sit down at a table, and coincidentally, a guy from the Elko Convention and Visitors Authority was sitting next to me. And I said, "Gee, do you really get that much business out of, out of this symposium for Elko?" And he says, "Oh, absolutely." I said, "Well..." So now he had my curiosity, and he said, "From mainland China, we get 6,000 room nights every summer, and for a little town like Elko, 6,000 room nights is quite a bit." And I asked, "Well, why, why Elko?" He said, "Well, they come in on nonstop from China. They board a 12-day tour bus, go around the western United States and see all the natural wonders. So they spend one night in California, the next night they stop in Elko, and the third night they end up in Yellowstone National Park." And he said, "We offer them a western experience in a western town." So that'll give you an idea of that the Chinese visitor is already coming to Nevada, we just want more of it. And you just don't print a brochure in Mandarin and a hope for the best. You have to China-size your hotels. The Chinese market does not carry MasterCard, Visa, or American Express. They carry something called China Union Pay. That is the credit card of China. And so our, it's not difficult to turn that on in the accounting system of our casino resorts, but you need to turn it on. And you need to carry certain items on your menus and some amenities in the guest room that the Chinese market enjoys. So we're spending the next nine months developing that with our, with our cooperative resorts. So get ready, China's coming. No question about it. To give you an update on some of our buildings, the Reno Sparks Convention Center, this building, as you know, is 500,000 square feet. It's the 38th-largest convention center in North America. It is about to go under a multimillion-dollar remodel with new carpeting, paint, and some internal signage. We are in the process right now of installing a $1.1 million upgrade to our Wi-Fi. When it's finished in December, we will be able to handle 25,000 simultaneous users and offer 10G Wi-Fi speed to everyone, basically meeting the needs of any exhibitor that will ever come into that building. We are also contemplating an expansion. It's interesting how the trade show business is booming in the western United States. I think everyone is familiar with Interbike, you've read about that in the newspapers. That is the 66th-largest trade show in North America. And of course, for the past, for 20 different events, we've been host to Safari Club International. That's the 97th-largest trade show in America. We're working on a number of others. And the constant theme is that our center is becoming too small to accommodate these traditional groups. And we have done a study of the major and secondary convention centers around the West, from Los Angeles, Long Beach, San Francisco, Sacramento, Portland, Seattle, Salt Lake, Denver, and Las Vegas as well. And in all of those instances, those cities are expanding and remodeling their convention centers. So we feel at the RSCVA that we need to keep up and not lag behind in that growth. So we are proposing probably a 300,000-square-foot addition, which may be 225,000 feet of exhibit space and another 75 to perhaps 100,000 square feet of meeting space. And these projects take a number of years to design and complete, so if everything worked smoothly, we would not see this come online until late 2022 or perhaps 2023. So it's really the next generation in the future that we're, we are trying to protect and build for. At the National Bowling Stadium, this building opened in 1995. It is owned by the City of Reno, it's managed by the RSCVA. Our management agreement expires in 2022, it will most likely be renewed. This is, this building is, has been quite unique. It has brought a minimum of a million room nights to the market, and most statistics show that it's closer to 2 million. It will undergo an interior remodel beginning in January of 2019. That remodel is, we are contractually obligated to, to keep in compliance with the United States Bowling Congress that books the tournaments here in our area. That remodel will cost approximately $4 million and will be paid solely by the Downtown Reno $2 surcharge fund. What will you see in the interior? The, all the stadium seating will be taken out, restrooms under, the stadium seating will move to the north wall. There'll be a bar and a small food outlet added, and you'll see new floor coverings and other treatments. Reno Events Center, great-looking building. It's been a great asset to the core of downtown Reno. It is primarily a concert and special event venue with seating for 7,200 folks. Right now, it's undergoing a $500,000 mechanical upgrade. The mechanical seating in there that's retractable is in need of repair and significant maintenance by the manufacturer, so that $500,000 bill will be absorbed by the $2 downtown surcharge as well. Reno Sparks Livestock Events Center, really, the DNA of this center is woven into the fabric of Sparks and Reno. It really gives us a lot of our spirit of our western heritage. We, for your information, the Livestock Events Center was originally established by a land grant in 1886, 131 years ago, and it has operated on that location as an equestrian and livestock facility ever since. The RSCVA has managed the Livestock Events Center since 1986, and we have another 19 years on our management agreement with Washoe County. And again, this facility is owned by the state, sits on 43 acres. We are conservative with our repairs and maintenance there. We are obligated to maintain it, and it takes a lot of maintenance to keep this facility running. Currently, it tracks, it's producing 35,000 room nights that are trackable for the region. But we estimate that a lot of other room nights and business coming to town go outside of the traditional group room blocks that use this facility. As a comparison, South Point, down in Las Vegas, which has cost hundreds of millions of dollars to develop and is considered in the far western United States as the benchmark for equestrian centers, they're only producing 61,000 room nights at that facility, and that was documented in August 17 article in the Las Vegas Review Journal. That concludes our remarks today. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments? Ms. Bybee?
Hi, there. Thank you so much for all the information and background on what you're doing. The one question I have, as you're looking at your new marketing campaign and logos and all the videos you're running, do you have any plans to include Sparks and things going on here in our city? And out in the Victorian Square, our Victorian Square District, the Marina, out at Golden Eagle, a kind of a missing scene, Sparks.
I only showed you two photographs today. I probably should have been thinking ahead and made sure that the ones we showed included the ones from Sparks. We do have photography and video footage of Sparks. That video I showed you, that is just one of probably five or eight videos, so the hotels here and this region, they do get fair play. And I apologize if what I showed you today didn't showcase that.
Yeah, with RSCVA, that S is there, and I just wasn't seeing it there, so just want to make sure you don't forget about us out here.
No, I promise, we will not.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Lawson does an excellent job of keeping me reminded of that as he sits on our, our board and is our co-chairman.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Bill, thanks, Ben.
And the members of the board, we're happy to come back whenever you'd like us to present to you.
Appreciate it, good report.
Nice to see you all.
Good job. Okay, next up is Mike Mirsky with the E-Don. Come on down, Mike. How you doing, Mike?
Great. I'll be the guard here.
Bodyguard. Mr. Witt, how are you?
This is quite a team, right?
I know.
This is a little...
Little do you know.
Get the two of you together.
We got Frank, too.
We got Frank too. Okay, we're actually making progress here.
Notice this says Reno Sparks.
He's been here before.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Mike Kazmerski, President and CEO of Edon. It's a pleasure to give you an update. But before I get into the meat of the update, we're fortunate to have two business leaders who are willing to come speak for a minute on behalf of Edon and give you a minute of their perspective on what's going on in their world and how we are working with them to make things better from their view. So first, Jay, if you want to start off?
Sure. Jay, Mr. Mayor Potem and members of the council, my name is Jay Witt, Silverwing Development. Yeah, I have professionally got on my feet in two spots in going forward. One is the city of Sparks, and the other is in the growth of Northern Nevada. And while I can't speak exactly to Edon's direction and their expected accomplishments on behalf specifically of the city of Sparks, I could tell you as a major investor in the town and continue to be a major investor in the town, that if it wasn't for their efforts to the east, the nomenclature and synergy that we are all shooting towards and accomplishing in Victorian Square would not be occurring. So again, while those may not be directly in the city of Sparks, the city of Sparks is, I just want to make the point, is directly benefiting from that effort and should not be overlooked. You know, secondly, I think that I have asked the Edon to also refocus their efforts on behalf of Victorian Square and the city of Sparks to open up the area towards potential of office user again. You know, we were early probably at the first go-round on this when we did actual plans. I think we're not as early anymore. I could tell you tomorrow, by example, I thought an urban grocer would be towards the end of the development. I'm meeting tomorrow with an urban grocer that wants to go in very soon. So tomorrow. So, you know, I get surprised, as, you know, I've been doing this for 40 years. I still get surprised as to some of the sequencing that goes on. But I would tell you that, you know, that I think that, you know, the direction of Edon, I'm, we are investor of Edon because of their direction on growth. And I would just ask that the city, you know, support them. I think there's a good opportunity with, particularly with the walkability issue. A lot of the companies that come to this area, one of the first questions I know they ask Edon, and this is not from Mike, but other folks I've talked to, is walkability. Tell us where, if, from a location standpoint, where is, you know, where's a walkable area? And as we get a little farther down the track here, particularly after next spring, Victorian Square, the walkability and the comprehensive nature of the various resources that will be available to people from living to lifestyle is going to become very readily apparent. And I think that will make it viable that's one of those locations, hopefully, could also be an office location. So it, you know, I will tell you, we need about 50%, 60%, somewhere in there pre-leased to do an office building today. So we need a major user. We can't just go spec like we can a residential or even the retail we're doing. But that is, you know, that's my direction. I just wanted you all to be aware of that. I wanted you to know that I kind of have my heart in both directions. I believe in what they're doing. I certainly believe in what all you are doing. And I was kind of dismayed by actually the last presentation, to be honest with you, because I think there's more vision, and I think there's more of a vibrant future for what is going to be showing up rather quickly in Victorian Square than elsewhere in the region. So, thank you. If any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Jay, questions, comments? Jay? Okay, Mr. Lepary?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Frank Lepary. In 2009, I was president of AGC, and I had my company in Sparks. And I've been in business for 35 years, or maybe 33, 34 years. And 2009 was pretty tough times. 2008 for everybody here. I sat on a enterprise fund for the city of Sparks, oversaw some of your projects, and we fought over how many stamps were going to buy. Pretty tough times. I cried with my employees when I laid them off. It was hard on all of us. So one day, I think 2010 or 2011, I read an article about Mike and Edon. And I, you know, I was impressed. So I got ahold of Mike and cut a check to him. And I thought, I saw really good things. So then I stepped up, paid a little bit more money. And I've been very, very happy for what he's done for this town and what Edon's team's done for this community. I think it will be very spurious for all of us to stop supporting Edon. I think their spirit, I think they've done great things for everyone. We're a community here with Reno Sparks and Washoe County. And what I see, we've all been very successful. And I think to stop supporting Edon will be a terrible mistake for all of us. I'm here to answer any questions, and thank you very much.
Any questions for Frank? And I would have to say between you and Jay, you guys are building Sparks right now. Every time I see a sign, it's got Frank Lepary Construction, or we know where Jay's at. So I think times are good right now for you guys, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. And you know what? You just don't see, you know, it's just, it's amazing how many things come from, you know, we don't do the big projects that you don't bring in here, but all the supporting staff is what we're doing, all the second generations and new buildings. And it's just, it's amazing. I mean, the, we're going to do, next to Woody's on 960 McCarran, I built that in 2008, maybe? And we're going to put a TI in there in, you know, 2017. So everything's moving real well, and I think we owe a big thank you to the Edon team. And you guys too. You've really supported us well too, and thank you.
And if you don't get to Woody's by 11:30, you're going to wait in line for about a half hour or so. Very popular restaurant. And Twisted Fort, is it the other one?
Yes.
Thanks, thanks Frank for all you do. Okay, Mike?
We'll get through this pretty quick, because I think you've seen most of this before. I did want to get two key business leaders to give you a little perspective on their view, what's going on. And I wanted to get them out of here, because they're both busy as hell, as they probably heard.
Yeah.
They're both doing great things, and they volunteered to come by and speak on our behalf. So I want to thank them for that. I also want to thank the staff, the Sparks staff has been fantastic, Steve Driscoll and everyone that we've worked with has been amazing. So it's a team effort. You've heard me talk about economic development before. It's not Edon doing anything by itself. We are oftentimes the tip of the spear, but you need the whole spirit to win. And you're part of the spear in getting things done, and we want to thank you for that. It can't happen without support, involvement, engagement, and really a positive pro-business attitude. So a special thanks to you personally and to the staff. You've seen this before. Our focus is on quality jobs, attracting, retaining, and growing. The stool, you've seen. Workforce development is more important now than ever, and community development is the base upon which everything is supported. And we're working more and more in workforce development and community development than ever before. Our key metric is how many companies do we get to come to the region and look at us? You got to get them to come, kick the tire before we can sell them on what a great community and what a great region this is. You can see we took it from four visits per month up to our goal of eight to 10. We're averaging 10 so far this year. So we're continuing to see great prospect activity, and our closure rate remains 70 to 80%. So that means if a company visits us and we get a chance to show and tell, we'll win more than 70% of those companies. So obviously, you get more to visit, you keep your ratio the same, and you continue to have growth in the region. And that's what we see here. You see from 2008, our average for the year was about 800. And each year since then, we've gone up to where we had a record last year of over 3,200. Our goal has been reduced this year. We've actually tapered off now. We're going for more quality jobs, more technology jobs, more higher-paying jobs. It doesn't mean we won't still bring in great distribution, manufacturing. We're looking for more of a focus on technology, more of a focus on that office space that Jay's looking for and others that will help us continue to grow the average wage in the region. Just some of our hot prospects, you see manufacturing continues to be really a big part of our activity. That, six years ago, didn't exist. We had no manufacturing. And in fact, if you look at the Bloomberg article here, where we were in the last, since May of 2012, where we've trended versus where the nation has trended in manufacturing, we clearly are becoming that place for manufacturing in the West, something that didn't exist before. A lot of that activity is in the industrial center, but when you look at the number of companies we've relocated in that five-year period, Story County only gets 20% of them. Now, yes, they're obviously the bigger ones, but a lot of our activity, the smaller companies we work with, Dooland and the Reno Sparks metro area, as well as some in Washoe County. And just some of the projects that have come to the Sparks area in the last several years, you can see manufacturing is a big part of it. And obviously, distribution logistics. We want to see more technology, and I think as Victorian Square ramps up, you'll see more of the small technology companies starting to look at the Sparks area. I would say that it's hard, it's gotten harder to fill space in Sparks now. We had six projects in the last 18 months that landed just outside of Sparks city limits in the Jesse Hawes Land, just to the north, and the Spanish Springs area. So we're getting companies to come, but it's hard to find that good industrial land in the region, which is something we're working on with Councilmember Lawson. You see the projected growth here. What's interesting is we were averaging around 2%. And since we've really ramped up our economic development efforts, we've been at 4% to 5%. And we expect that to continue for the next five years. If you also, I mean, this is a kind of a common sense thing, but these are the real numbers. We were averaging 4% growth taxable sales before the recession. Since we started to come out of the recession, taxable sales in Washoe County have averaged 10% a year, year-over-year increase. So clearly, as you bring in jobs, you bring in revenue to the region. In this case, in taxable sales, we have a broken property tax problem, which I think over time we will fix. This is one part of the taxes. Clearly, workforce is exciting to see the workforce numbers go down. When we started here, when I got here at the end of 2011, we were almost 14% unemployment, 30,000 unemployed, and now we're below 10,000. A lot of those are nonemployable. So we put a lot of people back to work, which is, really was our focus. Now that we're back to work, we need to get the wages up. And that's really a redirection of our efforts. Nancy McCormick came by and gave you an update a couple of weeks ago. She's doing amazing things. She's out there visiting companies, working with all of our many providers on workforce development, workforce attraction. That team has really become more important than ever. Now that we put most of the people that can get to work back to work, how do we take and increase the skill sets of our existing employees so that they can get those better-paying jobs? Some of the workforce development activities and the connection piece, the people we work with on the attraction side, we're working with RSCVA as well to help us bring more talent to the region. And part of that is, you know, that, some of those people will fill the quality jobs, and some of the people in the region will upgrade their skills. And oh, by the way, we've got 4,000 people graduating from UNR that, seven years ago, six years ago, almost all of them went out of the region to get a job. Now over 70% of them are staying here and working in the region. Doug McCormick came by, Erwin, excuse me, Doug Erwin came by and gave you an update on the entrepreneurial side. It's again, another important part of what we're doing. Helping startups grow seems like a small, you know, that's a small number, 121 new jobs when you have over 3,000 new for the region. But that's 67 new companies. And those are one- and two-person companies, but each, any one of those companies could really take off and be something great. And this part is what we're really excited about in the last five-year period. Before 2017, we were lucky to get total $20 million of investment into the region, and we're now over 35 year-to-date. And that number continues to go up. We have a $10 million investment coming that will be announced in the next couple of weeks in one of our companies here. So the more we can get those companies invested in, the quicker they'll grow in this region. Here are just some of the companies we attracted and some that we supported organically. And then you've got the three legs of economic development, but the base is the community development. And we've worked on some issues that are part of that community development piece. The EPIC report, Economic Planning Indicators Committee report is all about where is this growth going to go? And we laid that out, worked with a large committee, Sparks included, to kind of lay out a plan. And so far, we're actually tracking ahead of what we projected on the EPICs report. Obviously, WC1, getting 15 new schools in nine years is pretty important and helping that initiative along. Revitalization of downtown, arts and culture. We've worked on several arts and culture issues, and we appreciate Sparks being more engaged in that initiative as we go forward. The housing crisis is clearly something that a lot of people are working on, but getting the developers to talk about what was holding them back, what was slowing them down was important. Regional trails planning, we've got great trails, we just haven't developed a plan for the entire region. So we're working on that with a lot of our partners, including Sparks. Regional industrial parks, something we've talked about for several years. We looked at different regions. Actually, it looks like the one up the hill is the best, and we've actually tied two issues together. We've looked, we're looking at the traffic issues on I-80, and how do we get better connectivity to the industrial center? And there's a northern route that I just got sent to me this morning, we were working with and actually commissioned Rogers, who is it? Something Rogers. Wood Rogers, excuse me. That's it, good job. Wood Rogers, they've laid the map out. We actually have the map now, so we can start working on a committee to take a look at what's going to take to accelerate that northern route, which will really open up a lot of lands and take a lot of pressure off the north-south routes in the region, especially in Sparks. So we're, we work on issues that affect the community. This is that draft of the north route, and we've actually refined this now. You'll see a more sophisticated version of it. Worked with, working on estimates with NDOT on the yellow part and with RTC on the green part. And it's pretty important, because if we can get this in, it will really open up that potential for a business park up on the hill. So this is something we're pushing aggressively on. By the way, the road piece is not in NDOT's or RTC's plans for the next 20 years. So it's going to take a concerted effort by the community to get this on the radar and get this thing up the priority list so we can actually get it done. I mentioned the EPIC report. You can see the red line is where we're actually tracking. You know, three years ago, we said 50,000 new jobs in five years. I got a lot of eye rolls. People said, "No way." And the reality is, we're ahead of that line, you know, by quite a bit. And every expectation is that will continue at about the current trend for at least another five years. So again, you're part of an important team. You can see a lot of players working with us. We want to thank you for that. We ask that you retain funding, support for Edon at the current level, and I would open up to any questions you might have.
Okay, questions? Mr. Dare?
Hello, Mike. Good job. And it's always exciting to hear all the reports and all the stuff going on. And I'd almost say in our region, with what's going on, in my opinion, state tax-wise, you're doing your job too well. We're going to grow, and one of the obvious things that I know you know, and I just, almost in a sense, there's any speaking to it, are you guys involved in working with any of, on that end? Because I think when it comes to the growth, we see it. I mean, we're seeing it, we see jobs. When people tell me they don't have a job, it's because they're not looking for a job. Everyone's looking for someone to hire right now, and they're looking all over. So jobs are at all-time high. Housing's an issue only because we have so many people moving here. And so those are all problems. We either have a problem because we're dying or we have a problem because we're growing. So we have a better problem than the other way. But it would seem that we are going to find ourselves in some interesting situations in years to come if our state tax doesn't change at all. And with this, are you guys involved in that? Is it something that, I know you may not want to go depth into it, but I'd just be interested to hear your role.
Well, I can tell you, we have been working on the property tax issue now for three years and worked with Senator Ratty as she developed that legislation that's going to require another vote and then a vote of the people. So we'll be behind that 100%. Reset upon sale is, you know, it's not a, it doesn't fix everything, but it will fix property taxes in the long run. And it is, we're the only state that doesn't do that. So I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer. It's going to be a heck of a fight, and I can promise you that we'll take that one on full bore, because it's a significant issue. So we have really laid listed that as one of our top priorities. But it's not just the taxes and the tax structure, which is kind of broke. But we're working with the state as well to help them understand what's going on so we can get more NDOT funding up here. And NDOT, let's face it, most of the state is driven by what's happening in Vegas, which is, you know... is, you know, 2/3 of the state population-wise and legislatively, where the center of the world is, in their mind. So squeezing out our piece takes a fight, and we're down there on a regular basis, making sure people understand what's going on and really getting to support the entire state and what's going on here is very important. So I, I think it's a priority for us to get the property tax piece fixed. Our local governments and our school districts are dying because of it. If we don't fix that, we're going to have to do something pretty radical, otherwise, pretty quickly.
Well, it's very exciting to see in your team, you have a fantastic team. We get to work with them and all the different boards we're on and stuff, so thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mike, for the presentation. I especially appreciate your listing, kind of reminding us of the number of companies that have come to Sparks through EDON in the last four to five years. So really showing what areas those are, and some are small and some are larger, but really kind of refreshing our memories. And some of us haven't been here for four or five years to, to see how many companies have come here. I also appreciate having both Frank and Jay speak to their, as, as major investors in our community, in Sparks, and the effect, that positive effect that EDON has had on them. And I think when, when both of them were speaking, it made me realize too, that it's not just every manufacturing or building that's coming to the city of Sparks, but the benefits of what economic development does is far-reaching, down to Frank doing Chick-fil-A's and other local businesses, to Jay having people who will be moving into businesses and residents to our downtown. So really, we, we don't have, you know, until we look at a new industrial park, those big projects, we don't have the spots for them here in Sparks, but the effect on our businesses and on our economy and, and has, has, has driven the economy for, in a number of different ways. So it, it kind of just made me realize that even more when I listened to both of them speak, because it is another benefit that I think we might forget about as we're looking at EDON and what they do for the city of Sparks. So thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thanks for the report, Mike, always good. Guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
There you go. I move to approve the consent item. All of them, actually.
8.1 through 8.8.
8.1 to 8.8, thank you.
Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second attorney for the discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Got to get it up on the screen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, there we go. Okay, general business, 9.1. Consideration discussion and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of an appointment to the Community Assistance Center. Traditional governing board from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order: Donald Levitt, Shirley Bybee, Christopher Dare, Ed Lawson, and Ron Smith. And the mayor's recommendation is to appoint Mr. Dare. Questions, comments, motion? Ms. Bybee.
I move to confirm the appointment of Christopher Dare. Oops, I didn't turn it on, I'm sorry. I move to confirm the appointment of Christopher Dare to the CAC Transitional Governing Board.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9.2. Consideration discussion and possible approval repayment for the city's annual support of the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada, EDON, for the fiscal year Mr. Gronk.
Yeah, so this is just a approval of the expenditure that was included in the budget and approved in the budget for 2018, up to, up to $100,000. We have received invoice from, from EDON and, for that amount, and it's for your consideration approval today.
Okay. Mr. Lawson.
And I, I would just want to, I haven't been as enamored with EDON as I have been in the past, but I'm, I'm going to say that I'm going to leave it, obviously, to our board member, Councilwoman Bybee, as to the amount of funding. But it's something that we should look at down the road, and I understand that we don't have a lot of industrial at this point, but I think Sparks needs to reinvent itself. And something that we should really consider for the future is maybe thinking about creating some housing and hybrid-type zoning in our industrial center, or, along the river, where we could bring people down there and, and live along there instead of having tilt-up concrete boxes up against what's arguably probably the best asset we have in northern Nevada. So I'm going to support the, the funding level for them. I'm, I'm the one who pushed it. We were supporting them at about 30,000 a year, and I pushed it up to 100,000. I still believe that they're doing a wonderful job, but it's, we need to start looking at ways Sparks can make more of an impact in the region also.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Ms. Bybee.
This, this, this is tough because we've been hit with a couple of big budget things that came through across the table, I guess, as always, things that come up from, you know, tax bills to turf out at Golden Eagle and, and things we have not anticipated. However, I feel the benefit that EDON, that EDON does give us, and more importantly for me, we did budget this during the budget cycle. I would like to look at it closely when we look at our next budget cycle and decide where we stand financially and if we feel the 100,000 is doable, again, for us. But I think because it's in this year's budget, and I do feel that they're doing a good job, and I think they are perhaps more, you know, they're, they are staying focused on us because that, that's a big, that's a big chunk out of our budget. You know, and we have much smaller budget, budget than the city of Reno. So percentage-wise, for us to give $100,000 is, is, is a large amount and something to really think about. So I, I, I support remaining at the $100,000, and I do want to relook at it at our next budgeting cycle to see if we think that that's a reasonable amount to stay at, or we have other areas we'd like to see our money go and still maintain. Our membership on the EDON board, which I think is critically important. I mean, sitting on that board, the, the, the people that I serve with and the information that I gain and the connections I'm making with the other members of that EDON board, I think are really critical to the city and to our community, and so we definitely want to make sure we maintain a board position because it has been important.
Mr. Lawson.
See, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Shirley, but do you know what the funding levels are from the other two entities? Is, I believe that, Jeff, do you know?
I believe that.
I believe Reno is. The county only puts in like 40,000, and the city of Reno is like 80,000. We're like the highest funding level, I believe.
I thought Reno was the same as us, and I know the county is much less, 40 or 45,000 for Washoe County.
So, I mean, I would encourage us to get a hold of our counterparts and, and get them funding, because, you know, when you really think about it, Sparks is the smallest of the three entities, and we're funding at the highest level. So we need them to step up a little bit more too.
Yeah. I do believe Reno, I think Reno is the same as we are, but that's a smaller portion of their budget. They've got a huge budget, so 100,000 to them is a lot less than 100,000 is in our budget. So I agree.
Absolutely correct.
Okay, any other questions, comments, further discussion? Looking for a motion?
Okay.
Ms. Bybee.
Okay. I move to approve the allocation of $100,000 to the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Okay, Mr. Dare.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9.3. Consideration discussion and possible adoption of resolution number 3324, providing for the adoption of the Nevada Public Records Act, the Nevada Local Government Records Retention Schedules, and the Nevada Local Governments Records Program Manual. Defining extraordinary, I thought that was your name for a second there. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the city clerk's office is requesting adoption for resolution 3324 in an effort to establish a records management program for the city.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
I apologize, Julie Torres, records coordinator. This resolution will provide controls for the creation, maintenance, use, security, and distribution of city records. Several years ago, we adopted the local government retention schedule and the Nevada Local Government Records Program that the state of Nevada creates and maintains. And the laws have changed a little bit, there's been some things added to it, and so what we're doing now is we're trying to take those items, update the things that we need to update, make sure that our language for public records request fees is in there, how we can waive the fees for public records requests, some definitions. We needed to define things like extraordinary use of personnel, time, and our equipment when we're processing a public records request. So we, we defined those things in this resolution and hoping that we can kind of get the city all on, all of our departments on the same page for processing our records, make sure that we're compliant, that we're processing a lot of public records requests now that development has come back. And we just want to make sure all of our city departments are on the same page.
Are we allowed to charge for that, or no?
So you, you can. The state says that we can charge the actual cost of producing the record. We don't charge if it's electronic unless it takes us a considerable amount, considerable amount of time. If you have extraordinary use of time, which we're recommending two hours, not very many of our requests come at two hours, that, that we could start charging at that point, but then the max is 50 cents a page, and that's only if we're actually printing things. We want to make sure that we're trying to provide electronic copies for free. That's our intent. And we want to make sure that, but there are some people who, who really want that paper copy.
Okay. Does Reno or the county charge for the services?
Yes, sir.
They do? How much do they charge?
I wouldn't, I don't have their schedule. There was a, a little bit of a news clip a couple of weeks ago that some, Joe Hart did a Ask Joe, and they had given out, but I don't know, they said ours was 50 cents, but it's not. It, it is.
Only if they get it printed, okay.
Right.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott.
I move to adopt the resolution.
That's all we have.
Okay. We have a second. Mr. Lawson.
Second. I'll second that fine motion.
That's all I got.
They're hard to read sometimes, aren't they? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.3. Consideration discussion and possible adoption of resolution, was that the one I just read? Yep?
No. Oh, yeah.
It is, yeah. 9.4. Consideration discussion and possible approval of the payment for reimbursement for moving expenses and operating costs related to the construction of the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase III. You're up.
Good afternoon. Mayor Potem Smith, members of council, for the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city of Sparks. This item is a claim for reimbursement from Cal Freight, who leases a portion of the property from 2090 Klepey Lane. This is very similar to the item I brought forth on August 14th for Soil Tech, another leasing at that property. Basically, North Truckee Drain Phase III construction is going through that backyard as part of their lease. Cal Freight utilizes a portion of that area normally for their secure parking for their trucks. They do a lot of milk delivery, things like that, so they got to have a site that is secure, and they also have to do their maintenance onsite for their own records and permitting. So during construction, they've had to relocate offsite to a secure location, and then they're also bringing the trucks back on a daily basis for cleaning, maintenance, that type of stuff. So our property consultant has worked with Cal Freight through the construction to document those costs and prepare the reimbursement claim. That includes the offsite rental and that employee time, which we've reviewed. Their claim is $112,000 during the time of construction when we've affected them. We've reviewed all that, all the backup payroll information, that type of stuff, and recommend approval. With that, that's my presentation.
Okay, Mr. Lawson.
So Andy, is this the last one? Is this everybody that's affected by Phase III?
Yeah, we believe so. Our consultant has reached out to all the tenants. This is the last one we're aware of.
And we anticipate completing this, when is it? Is it next two months, or?
Yeah, it'll be in the spring is when we'll be completed. This area, the property, will be done pretty shortly, very soon.
Glad when this is over with. This has been a long time coming.
Yeah.
And it's a huge boon for our industrial area. It lowers the industrial floodplain by a foot. That's a lot of water. All right, good. I'm glad that we're getting to the end of this. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
Andy, can you clarify? I'm a little confused on the actual cost of calculating, like, do these, are these drivers going like back and forth? Because I looked, I said, this, I know these have got to be close, and I looked it up, it's like .6 miles, it's a three-minute drive. So are the trucks making multiple back and forth, and then the mechanics doing four hours a day? Can you kind of explain? Those numbers aren't adding up for me.
Yeah, they're having to bring those trucks in one at a time, so the mechanic's going back and forth each time driving those.
So half of their, half of their shift, they're traveling the three minutes or five minutes back and forth to move trucks?
Yeah, they're having to double-team over to get the truck, get it back, that type of stuff, and stand late.
Okay, so you said our, our people did look into and found that it was justified cost and that, that what they're doing is really, you know, would, would warrant us paying that amount?
Yeah, we did review that. Yep.
Okay, it just, it just wasn't adding up when I was looking at the distance, so. Okay, thank you for explaining.
Mr. Dare.
I have a question, just based upon what Mr. Lawson was talking about. So when this particular thing's done, is there an area of the floodplain that we can say that is a little more usable, where we could actually take, because he said if, if there's one foot, I know it doesn't affect the whole industrial area, but there's probably a few areas that it really affects greatly, that we could really do. And I know that might not be part of this, so I don't know if I'm kind of jumping out too far, but it, but it'd be great to know that as we're going around and even where the, pushing EDON, asking them to find people for us, but it does help us to have this done and helps with that. So is, is there a zone that we know this is going to help?
That impact or benefit can vary through the industrial area. That is something that we have discussed with the flood project, with their efforts and the timing of, does it make sense to do any interim mapping after this project is done and before theirs is finished? So that is something that we are definitely looking at. Thank you.
So that, that was my question. It's, you're talking about redoing the map to show it based on 97 levels. That, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve payment for reimbursement of moving expenses and operating costs related to the construction of North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase III project by Cal Freight, a lessee of 2090 Klepey Lane, unit A in the amount of $112,000. Mr. Dare.
I second that recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy. Okay, 9.5. Consideration discussion and possible approval of a reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks share of a contract AC5415 with Nelson Electric for the electrical substation rehab project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation. Mr. Drinkwater.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager. You have before you today requests for, to approve a reimbursement to the city of Reno for a capital improvement at the treatment plant. This project is the replacement of our main power transformers, our connection to the utility grid. Our two main transformers are approximately 30 years old, and testing has revealed they're near the end of their service life. They're not in danger of imminent failure, but they are starting to wane. They're not in danger of imminent failure, but they are starting to wane. So the project was initiated, design was completed. As is typical for this, Reno held the open competitive bid. Nelson Electric is the low-responsive bidder. We are asking for your permission, for your approval of the reimbursement. However, this is a slight departure from our regular procedure. Reno, the City of Reno Council has not seen this item yet. They will hear it at their regular meeting on this Wednesday, two days from now. I'm asking for you to approve it early simply because we are expecting a fairly substantial increase in the demand for transformers due to the three hurricanes that hit the southeast portion of this country. Although there was a lot of damage, we expect the production queues to be long. We're hoping to avoid a significant delay by getting in as fast as we can. So by you approving it for us today, Reno on Wednesday, that frees the contractor to start the procurement process, and hopefully we can avoid being stuck at the back of the queue behind the City of Houston or Puerto Rico or anyone one of another, other several hundred communities that were impacted unfortunately by those weather events, so.
Should our motion say contingent to Reno approving this?
Well, that would be fine, sir. If they don't approve it, then there's nothing to reimburse, so it functionally is moot.
Okay, all right. Mr. Lawson.
I'm ready to make a motion unless you have questions.
Go ahead, we can get questions after that.
I move to approve the reimbursement to the City of Reno for Spark's share of the contract with Nelson Electric for the Electrical Substation Rehabilitation Project at Tom Wharf not to exceed the amount of $292,117.44.
We have a motion, Mr. Abbott.
Not one penny more.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Questions? Okay, seeing none, please vote. I'm trying to get it to work. There we go. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Mike. Okay, 9.6, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the transfer of real property, C Street Parking Garage, APN 03219319, located in Redevelopment Area One from the City of Sparks to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith, members of the City Council, I'm Armando Anellos, the Assistant Community Services Director. This agenda item asks the City Council to approve the transfer of city-owned property located 955 C Street to the Redevelopment Agency. The parcel is approximately 42,000 square feet in size, so just under an acre, and improved to the parking garage that was constructed in 1988 and contains approximately 341 parking stalls. The garage is currently managed by the city as free public parking. This proposed action is being taken pursuant to direction that the City Council gave to the city manager on August 28th to negotiate and prepare a disposition and development agreement providing for the sale and redevelopment of this property to Silverwing Development. So before that can happen, this needs to happen. Silverwing's preliminary proposal for the property is to retain the existing parking garage, but add another parking level, a podium, and then five to six stories of apartments above it. In exchange for the property, in other words, in terms of compensation to the Redevelopment Agency, Silverwing is proposing to grant the city the right to use on a permanent basis for public parking, a to-be-determined number of parking spaces which would be maintained at the developer's expense. Per Nevada redevelopment law, the city may dedicate, sell, convey, or lease its property to a redevelopment agency for the purpose of aiding and cooperating with the construction of a redevelopment project. If you approve this transfer today, once staff and Silverwing negotiate a development agreement, it would be brought to the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency for approval. Since that DDA would actually represent the Redevelopment Agency's conditional agreement to sell Silverwing the property, it would be that, at that point, that the Redevelopment Agency would need to conduct the required public hearing as well as obtain the City Council's consent to sell the property. So we'd have to notice and, you know, it'd come before, the DDA would come to you, and it would be at that point, you know, that the commitment would potentially be being made to transfer the property. Transfer now from the city to the agency doesn't represent a commitment to sell the property to Silverwing or anyone else, it's just a transfer between the two public agencies. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Dare.
Can you speak to the traffic study? Because obviously, we've all heard a lot of problems down there in traffic, parking. People have questions and things like that, and I know we've been doing a lot of work on that, so just trying to bring the.
And are you, Councilman Dare, are you specifically referring to the parking analysis?
Parking analysis and making sure, so we have businesses, if they're listening to this right now, and they're like, what is going on? Is that enough? And that, that kind of thing.
So we're trying, staff is working on finalizing that, that analysis, specifically a consultant is working on finalizing that analysis. I mean, there's been multiple iterations, as questions have been asked. And really, the goal there is to determine how much public parking is needed, you know, in that, in that redevelopment district, and to make sure that it's available so that, you know, those businesses that have historically depended on, you know, public parking have it available. It's frankly more of an issue on that eastern end towards Pyramid than it is on the, on the western end towards the Theater. But once that analysis is done, then, you know, we will, we will be looking to propose something in the, in the development agreement as to the number of parking spaces that would be needed to be retained in order to make sure that, you know, there's adequate parking for those businesses. So it's in progress. I think we're nearing a conclusion. We are targeting approximately, well, the first meeting in November of the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency for purposes of actually bringing a DDA forward. So we have, we have, you know, we have a considerable amount of work to do over these next six weeks or so between now and when that would happen.
So today's decision, today's decision is just the beginning of the movement, and so anybody, we're still doing a lot of work on it, a lot of studies before we end up hitting that in.
Well, yeah, you know, it would, there'd be some outreach to those businesses out there in terms of, you know, where we're going with this, and, you know, ultimately everyone would have their say, you know, when we conduct those public hearings, when, you know, when it comes to the agency and the City Council for consideration.
And one of the parts I really like about it, actually, because I park in there often, my wife likes to park there, we're close and stuff, and is that those, from elevators to trying to keep that place is very difficult. I know we fix that stuff all the time. You'd wonder, because it seems to be broken a lot, but we do fix it all the time, we're out there cleaning up all the time, but it seems like it's very hard to manage. So it's nice to know that a private entity would find a way to keep that, keep that up.
Well, you know, we, we're preparing to make a considerable investment in the garage next to the theater, you know, to time that with the reopening of the theater next year. You know, this, this facility on the, on the eastern side of Victorian Square is, is an older facility. It's got, you know, some more substantial issues. Really, if this were to come to fruition in terms of an agreement to sell that property to Silverwing, they would be responsible for, you know, basically renovating the facility and then maintaining it, and then, you know, the agency's compensation would be in the form of, you know, a number of parking spaces that they would maintain.
Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
So, so I think that kind of answered a lot of my, my question, my concern, and so I understand the development agreement will address in detail the parking needed, the parking that they agree, how many, because you said unspecified number of parking spots. That will be parking study, and the development agreement will fine-tune that on what, what we find, and it'll be in the development agreement, and the Redevelopment Agency sail for that purpose at that time, which is our next step.
That's correct. The, the number of spaces that they would be required to, you know, provide as public parking would be specified in the development agreement. That will rest on the analysis that's being done, you know, as part of the.
Okay, and I think that's important, not just to our residents, but to our businesses who've been there, and all the businesses that are there and have made it through the recession. I want to make sure that they're covered and they're not feeling that they're getting squeezed out on parking. So as long as we address that there, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, if for whatever reason, could we transfer the property from the redevelopment back to the City of Sparks?
Yes.
Okay.
And frankly, you know, the, the life of this redevelopment district is scheduled to end in 2023, and, and, you know, there's, there's no, at this juncture, there's no, you know, thought that it would continue beyond that. So at that point, all of the redevelopment agency's assets would transfer back to the city, so, you know, if nothing happens, at that point, it would come back to the city.
Mr. Lawson.
So one thing I want to make sure you're negotiating there, as a Harley rider, we've got to keep the motorcycle parking. That's a big deal.
I'm sure Mr. Erickson will take note of that.
Yeah. I'm telling you, that's a great place to park your motorcycle, and I think you can get 50 or 60 motorcycles in there, so it's, it's a big deal.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Bybee.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the transfer of the C Street Parking Garage property from the City of Sparks to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks.
We have a motion. Looking for a second? Ms. Lawson. Ms. Lawson. Mr. Lawson.
Mrs. Lawson is working somewhere.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, move on to public hearing items. 10.1, second reading, public hearing discussion and possible adoption of bill number 2726 and ordinance amending chapter 9.134 of the Sparks Municipal Code to prohibit inflatables during special events without a permit. Tracy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem Smith and council members. My name's Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Before you today is the second reading for recommended amendments to chapter 9.34 of the Sparks Municipal Code, mainly defining what an inflatable is and as it relates to special events on public property. It is recommending that inflatables during special events on public property are prohibited without a permit. And so what we have in progress right now is on Wednesday, we will meet with the Parks and Recreation Commission upon if this is approved today, and we are presenting policy and the permitting process to the commission for their approval, and it would be effective upon that meeting. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
So you and I talked about this, it's not, every, every inflatable will need a permit, but not every permit will have a charge attached to it.
There is no fee set up for this, for this permit. This is defining inflatable rides. We're not allowing inflatable rides at special events. This is more about the displays, the size of the displays will be dictated in the policy. It's not spelled out in the ordinance. The ordinance is simply, more or less, it's prohibited without a permit. And then the Parks and Rec Department will, will manage the permitting process per the policy adopted on Wednesday.
And the permit would be issued per event?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, I know we spoke about this, I just want to get it kind of on the record. When we talk about displays, we're not talking about, like you said, yard art, correct? This is.
Correct, yes. The idea being, this is about the safety of our community, our participants, and our event producers, and we don't want to eliminate the ability to decorate and create a theme for their event. So the idea is the lighter weight, smaller type inflatables for decoration, no rides.
Ms. Bybee.
Okay, so does that include, I'm very concerned about what 39 North Pole wants to do and the inflatables they want to use. If they are permitted for, would they be allowed if they go through the permitting process? And you, I understand the safety side of it for sure, but I also want to look at what event, you know, with that event, I don't want anyone to be in danger, but I also want them to be able to up the, you know, the decorations and the feeling that without big cost of doing other, other types of items that cost a lot more than the inflatables. So are those type of inflatables for, say, for 39 North Pole, will those be allowed and permitted? Will it depend on what they have?
It depends really what they have and the specs that they provide through the policy and permitting process. The original plan was, you know, a maximum height of five feet. I think it will be a case-by-case basis through the policy. I, I honestly have to reread that for our commission, but I know that we have already stated, staff has already stated, that some of the items that they have suggested or sought approval on are too tall. I mean, they're, they're 12 feet tall, and so.
And the height is because they are not anchored securely? Is it a wind issue? That's the primary problem with going with the higher, with the height?
That, and we're trying to stay consistent with fire code as well.
And does the fire department, are they part of this permitting? Or who checks the, when they're looking? I mean, who is doing the, the permitting to see that the, you know, the standards to hold them down, the height, that the cables are using? Is that through the fire department?
The permitting will be done through the Parks and Rec Department based on the specifications provided by the event producer, and at the time of the event, it also will have to pass inspection by the fire department.
Okay, I thought I saw fire department somewhere there. So we're looking at maximum heights for any event of being five feet?
You know, I'm sorry, but I, I have to review that with staff tomorrow. Francine will be back in the office. The policy has been, it's on the agenda for Parks and Rec Commission on Wednesday. I can't recall if that was set at five feet maximum or not, but we can still discuss that with commission.
Okay, and is.
The ordinance doesn't set that. The ordinance is not setting the policy per se, right? It's just saying inflatables prohibited without a permit.
Okay.
We can still discuss tomorrow with staff and review the policy before we present it on Wednesday, but I believe it's written as five feet maximum.
Okay, so the policy will come before the Parks Commission?
Correct.
This is, this is just the ordinance that you have to have a permit in order to have the inflatables?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, is it look like a one-week turnaround time to process a permit and get inspected? Or is it, because the inspection can't really be done until it's.
Right.
Put up, so.
Yeah.
A week, two weeks? What do you, what do you?
Now, the, it, it should be a pretty quick turnaround. It's really no different than the special event application process. It becomes a part of that process. So just like when they ask for an alcohol permit or other permits when they apply for special event applicant, permit, this will be a part of it and become a part of that packet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dare.
So 39 North, the downtown, 39 North Pole, so I don't know if you've ever seen, in Las Vegas, I know they have Opportunity Village. It's something I went to for many, many years, and it's amazing. It's acres of this awesome thing for families, and I know that's what they're trying to create. I, I don't want, at least on my part, to feel like we're saying yes to something that somehow minimizes what we can do as our city and come in and not let people create some of that. I mean, four feet is, I'd be very concerned. That's, that's, that's not even the size of, that's, that's just, that's just too small. It doesn't really do it. So I'd be really concerned a little bit if, in my point, if I said yes today, knowing that I have no, what we're saying yes to, I don't even know, because that, that whole thing, it's, it's a pretty amazing thing. Obviously, safety, none of the things on the display side are rides. I mean, I get the rides. I get inflatables, I get all that, but I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about saying yes to something that just hinders what we can create in our city that can be really great and something that other, our local jurisdictions can't do, and we could do this. So it's good for our city, it's good for, and it's been growing. This will be the third year they're, they're doing it, and I just, I say, I'm, I'm a little concerned, especially because it just seems that we're, that we're being asked to say yes, but then over there, we, we don't know, so it's whatever comes up with, and then we're kind of all, I, we don't want to at some point come back and say, you say, well, I know you made a rule, but we don't like it. You know, I mean, I, I don't want that conversation to happen, I want to work together, but I am very concerned knowing that i- if it's permitted and we, we make our exceptions accordingly for what, and make sure they're strapped down correctly, that makes sense to me, but those, those, they're, they're pretty, like I said, I've just seen it done, and I've seen it done well. And so for me to, it's not just because I want to do, you know, obviously, I'll disclose, I helped start 39 North. So to me, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in the mix of that, but more than that, I, this, I was really excited about this because I know what it can turn into and really great for us. So with that said, I'm a little concerned and would probably, I don't know, I struggle with just saying yes to, yes to this if that's the case. I don't know that I realized, I thought this was actually going to help make it so where we're not person to line up and we can, on Nuga property, we can do what we want, and then comes Sparks, where we're like kind of almost decorating, but not really. I, I, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that, so. I don't even want to speak to that, or, I said a lot, so.
Understood, Councilman Dare. There, there have been noted concerns about the height requirement. Whether it's tethered down properly or not doesn't minimize the safety issues. I mean, if you recall, this all came about with a slide that had just passed inspection, and we no more than turned our back, and the wind came down, lifted it out as high as Bourbon Square Building, and it landed in another parking lot, broke a light pole, and luckily did not land on a person. And so this is where this all originated from and why we don't do the rides. And so with us, even though if your yard art, if you will, is a lighter weight material, it still has, you know, mechanisms to inflate it and this and that, and if it becomes a flying object, if you will, in a windstorm, it could still harm somebody. I know I can't prevent all of that, but we can certainly, through policy of the commission, I've heard your concerns, we can, I can defer to Allison if need be with our legal division. I believe I can, even though the agenda is posted, I can look at the policy and reconsider if it does state a five-foot maximum, reconsider that and re-address or present it on Wednesday night. My understanding is Parks and Recreation Commission does set and approve policy versus ordinance. They know we're here before you today. They have supported what we've presented so far, which was long before I got here. So I don't know, I mean, I think that we can work something out. And I do think that we are here to help events be productive and successful. I'm concerned that there's an opinion that might say otherwise, that we don't want events to be successful.
Please hear me, I'm not saying that. I would not say that at all. I'm saying this particular event has some special things to it.
Sure does.
And there's probably not another way to do this event financially and, and obviously, safety is there. But if that wind kicked, that kind of wind kicks up, I'd say it almost doesn't matter what you have out there at that point. There's something going to be flying in the air that could damage something.
Well, the tents will fly too.
Well, that's my, but that's my point. So, so we're trying to protect something that if Mother Nature screams, we're done. It's going to do what it's going to do. And I get, believe me, I even work in school, so I, we protect all kinds of stuff. Maybe trying to make it as safe as humanly possible. But if we're not careful, we'll just, the safety comes in and crouches on the ability to actually do some things that I don't know that it needs to. And I think this is one of them that I, I said, I, I don't...
It could be, I, I can, I, all I can say at this point, at this juncture, being that commission's on Wednesday night, is review the policy when I get back to the office today that we have ready for presentation. And perhaps make sure that it's a case by case basis and maybe a little bit of leniency in the verbiage so that it's not set at that maximum. I don't know if that eases your concern.
At this point, what I'd be comfortable with...
Hello, thank you, Allison.
This will put it into this whole conversation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner, Council, excuse me. Allison McCormick, Assistant City Attorney. If I remember correctly, the five feet is set out in the policy, but the Parks and Recreation Commission can, a commissioner could make a motion to amend that policy. And certainly, I or Ms. Dominguez or Councilwoman Abbott, I'm sure would be prepared to discuss your concerns with the commission on Wednesday before they vote on that policy. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Lawson?
So I was in the sign business for 17 years. We put up big signs and little signs and all signs have engineering and they're engineered to 95 mile an hour winds. There's a simple formula that can be put to make these things very safe. And you just have to have a certain amount of thickness to counterbalance all of that. So to me, you could, you could require an engineering portion of it to make the thing safe. My worry is, so we, let's say we get Bombardier skis and they want to bring out their entire new line of ski boats and skis and they've got a 30-foot tall gorilla that stands out there and holds a jet ski. It's an inflatable, it's a great advertising for them, it's great for the city of Sparks. And then we say, oh, sorry, it's dangerous. Well, we can show you that it engineers and it will withstand a wind of 95 miles an hour and we say, oh, sorry, it's over five feet tall. I don't think I can support this, this ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Bybee.
Kind of a follow-up, moving away from 39 North and kind of moving where Councilwoman Lawson was, I'm thinking about Rib Cookoff. And at Rib Cookoff, whether we have the Cable has his big inflatable bull that's out there, whether there are other, some of those, some of the things, the displays that go up with Rib Cookoff are pretty high and in the winds. I don't know how many are inflatable, but, but other events that we have besides 39 North Pole, what other signage or like, like he said, what other signage or inflatables come along? And I agree with the rides, I think no on, no, no on that, I totally agree with. I think that's definitely a risk we don't want to take. But on the signage and on things like another inflatable for advertising or for an event, I, I would agree with Councilwoman Lawson on the engineering is there too. And they'd have to require that, we'd have to require that, that they guaranteed with us that if it would withstand 95 mile per hour, that they could go to that height for, and I think it's, that's a case by case basis for me.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Tracy, go ahead.
There, there was, there is also suggested the 50 weight limit deflated, 50 weight, 50 pound weight limit. And when this started a couple of years ago, Rib Cookoff, the Armadillo, that was a big to-do because it was inflatable, that was their marketing tool. It was up on top of their display, not on, on the ground. And we, they took it down, we had them take it down. It is on, I don't know where Cable was, for example, at Rib Cookoff. But if it had been on, if it was on a Nugget lot or private property, I don't have authority over that. If they were on public property, probably shouldn't have been there based on what we've been enforcing the last couple of years as the, you know, the unwritten rule. So I hear your concerns 100%.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up to anybody wishing to speak. And the first card adds from Kim Szazinski, come on down to Kim.
Good afternoon, my name is Kim Szazinski from 39 North. And we have an issue with the five foot height. And having everything kind of go through, we have no problem with the permitting process whatsoever. That's fine, 50 pound weight limit, fine. But to, to limit it at five feet, I think is defeating the purpose of what we're trying to do. And there's a lot of inflatables that are a little taller than most people. I don't know, six, seven feet. I mean, we're just limiting this so much to five feet and then having whatever the wind blows on that certain day, yes or no? I mean, I think this should be definitive, that we either don't have a height limit and we have it with weight and making sure, you know, that it's permitted and all of the proper things, we have no problem with. But I think limiting it in that way, I think puts a hardship on what we're trying to do and what we're trying to create for 39 North Pole. We are not proposing any kind of rides or anything like that with the description of the big slide. I mean, we don't have anything that high. But then it does restrict if we want Cable to come out and support this event and be, you know, where we need them to be, it could be on city property. And that, you know, then they can't do it. So I think as long as it's weighted down properly and permitted, there should be no height limit and under 50 pounds. That's all I, that I have today.
Thanks, Kim, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. And Mr. Attorney, if they were to make a motion today, could we as a council say extend the height limit to a certain height or, or?
You can amend it, sure.
Whatever we want to do.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Looking for a motion, Mr. Abbott?
I don't have a motion, but I think what we're, the five feet's in Wednesday night's Parks and Rec. We're not looking at the five feet tonight or right now, correct?
City council is only looking at an ordinance.
The ordinance, not the policy.
Allow the Parks Department to set the policy.
Correct.
Would it have to come back to us once you set the policy?
That's my understanding, no.
No, it would not.
Okay. But we could give you some direction on what we were looking at.
Yes.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Tom?
Uh, no.
Okay. Ms. Bybee?
Okay, so let me clarify, I know we're doing the ordinance. If we passed this ordinance, can we pass it, Mr. Adams, with the contingency that there be no height requirement or that it be a higher height requirement than what you're looking at in policy? I, I don't feel comfortable passing this. If I, if I'm leaving it up to the Parks Commission and they pass it at five feet, then I, that's not what I support. So how, how do we do that, or can we?
The problem with, with an ordinance is, is that you can't include everything to cover all different contingencies. And as I'm reading the proposed ordinance, it's, it's intended to be broad in scope, yet narrow in purpose. That is, to, to protect our citizenry, to protect those attending the special events. And by taking a proactive approach in that, well, we, we don't want a height limit, we don't want to allow this, or we want to modify that, you're really taking a lot of the discretion out of those, that board that presumably knows about these things. I, you can always revisit the ordinance down the road. In other words, if, for whatever reason, this ordinance is not working out, 39 North has a problem, Cable has a problem, some, you're going to hear about it. And you can always bring it back and either amend it or just get rid of it altogether. All you're doing tonight is empowering the Parks and Rec Commission to do, to address an issue that they believe needs to be addressed. And what this ordinance does is it gives them that discretion to do that.
Dare?
And that I get, but the problem is we have something coming up in a very short amount of time. So if all of a sudden, which I'm...
What event do you have coming up?
We have 39 North coming up.
And when is that event?
December...
You can, you can, as a compromise, you'd always make this ordinance effective after that event.
I mean, at the same, well, at the same time, I hear your concern. I, I don't want to belittle at all what you guys' concern is because I think safety is huge, huge and paramount to what we do. It's very important. It's just, there's a balance in there. I mean, I, I know if, if we wanted to be safe, we wouldn't let people do a lot of things. You just, you know, where do we get to that place where you can't move out of your house without, because something might happen? And so we don't, we, we just want a balance on this. And my concern is, is that we put some roadblock in the way of an event that has been going on and, and is used to function a certain way and now it can't. And so, and if anything, we want to see this event grow, not be minimized. At least I want that, I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else. I know I want that for my voting, so.
Could I make a suggestion here that we let the Parks and Rec make their decision? But I think waiting till January 1st to put it into place would help because that's the same time when we get all the new events for next year becoming in. And if we have new rules, they'll know it right away. And that way, everything that's scheduled for this year, we can, we just go about what we're doing. You can still inspect them, you know, but...
But we always do, that's not an exception.
Yeah, I mean, that's, there's no problem there. So I, I'm making a suggestion that that's what we do, put a, a time certain on when it actually starts, which would be in 2018. Matter of fact, I'll make that motion. Mr. Abbott?
I have a question with that. Right now, are we, we don't allow inflatables on city property, like with the new pole?
Yes, we do, and we made an exception last year for 39 North Pole.
Okay, well, the ordinance just...
Had inflatables at Pumpkinpalooza on Sunday, yesterday.
So I'll make that motion and we'll see what happens. Is there a second? Okay, dies for lack of a second. Got any other ideas, guys? Somebody's got to make a motion, or you don't have to, and this goes away. Then it goes right to the Parks and Rec. Ms. Bybee?
Okay, so if we do not take action on this today, can the Parks and Recreation Department tomorrow, they're at the commission on Wednesday, can they set their policy without this? Or do they need this in order for them to set their policy?
There's currently no ordinance giving authority to implement a permitting process for inflatables at all. So without this ordinance, there's no opportunity for the Parks and Rec Department to decide that a certain inflatable is or is not permitted.
So it needs this ordinance in order for the Parks and Rec Commission to take action?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Dare?
So I, I actually, I will second this motion. And here's, here's the reason why, and I, yeah, I'll second Ron's and...
Ron's is off the table, so you're going to have to make that motion, if that's what you want to do.
Then, then I don't mind making the motion that we, we move forward with this, implement in January. That gives us a chance to hear, I, I think it's important that we believe in our Parks and Rec and in the group that's there. And I think our lawyer mentioned that, that, you know, we have a good group of people there that are watching out. But I think they've probably heard and overheard our concern. And it is something that we can, if, if it really goes to a place that we don't like, we can come back and bring it back up in January and say...
So state your motion, Mr. Dare.
Okay, my motion is that we move to approve this ordinance and have it not implemented till, till January. But I would like it to come back and hear what happened in our January session as it gets implemented.
Mr. Lawson?
I was asking to speak, I'm not seconding.
Okay, go ahead. And was there a second? I'll second that motion. Okay, open discussion, Mr. Lawson?
So I think we need to go back to the drawing board. It's just too open-ended for me. Ultimately, this body is the elected officials. We need to make the decision. So we sit on all the different boards and commissions throughout the entire valley. We know what the plan is for the city of Sparks and the region moving forward. And I think limiting our potential for special events and losing customers because of it is not in our best interest when it could be solved by a simple engineering mathematical problem. As I look at all my engineers sitting over here that do that every single day.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we, seeing none, we have a motion to second, please vote. Okay, it passes three to two. Okay, thank you, moving on to 10.2. Is this you also, Tracy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, second reading, public hearing, discussion, possible adoption of bill number 2727 and ordinance amending chapter 12.24 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide principal park rules and other matters property related thereto. Tracy?
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tim Smith and Councilmember Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Rec Director for the Record. Before you on this second reading is amendments recommended to chapter 12.24 of the SMC regarded to Prince, regarding principal park rules, some of which are already codified, some of which are Washoe County Code and Sparks Municipal Code. I carefully selected those that we want to codify in the best interest, again, of our community and the safety of our park users and citizens and visitors. One of which is inflatables will be prohibited in city parks, period. There is no permitting process at all. This is within the park system, this is not related to special events. Archery prohibited without a permit in city parks. Golfing prohibited, period, in city parks. And organized sports prohibited without a permit in city parks. This is not new, it is simply being requested for codification. And then metal detectors prohibited without a permit in city Sparks, city parks. Similar to the inflatable policy, I have created a metal detector policy and permitting process for the commission to approve on Wednesday. And there is no fee for that permit. And it basically just kind of controls, helps us to control where they can and cannot metal detect and possibly disrupt our landscape and things like that. It's, there's not a lot of restrictions on it, but we don't obviously want them in our sports complexes, for example.
So that's the same question, Tracy, that I asked before. To get a permit to do that, is that for one day or one hour or...
For metal detecting, it would be for one year.
One year, okay.
Yes. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to adopt bill number 2727 and ordinance amending chapter 12.24 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide principal park rules.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 10.3, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of a collective bargaining agreement AC 5418 between the City of Sparks and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1265. Mindy?
Good afternoon. Mindy Balk, Human Resources Manager for the Record. For your approval is a labor contract between the city and the International Association of Firefighters Local 1265. The positions covered under this contract range from firefighters, firefighter paramedics to fire captains and fire prevention. So it's pretty much everybody but battalion chiefs. I will highlight the contract changes and answer any questions you may have after. This agreement is one year and will expire on June 30th, 2018. There are three contract changes that have financial impacts. The first is a 2% COLA, which will be retroactive to the first full pay period after July 1st. This COLA has 100... This COLA has a hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-dollar impact to the general fund and twenty-three-hundred to other funds. The second change that has a financial impact is the structure of how we pay special pays. Instead of getting three percent of the top of the firefighter step, all employees in this contract will all get three percent of their base pay. This change is to accommodate a purse change, so we had to change our contract to do that. The financial impact of that is fifteen thousand dollars per year, and this is also retroactive July. The final financial impact is, of this contract, is the increase to the accrual of annual leave. A new tier was added at ten years, and additional hours were added at fifteen and twenty. The increase to this will be fifty-nine thousand in the general fund and nine, nine hundred in other funds. The next category of changes incorporates changes from the memorandum of understanding that came before council for approval on February sixth, 2017. All of these changes were made to accommodate the addition of adding paramedics to our fire operations. This includes changes to the personal redaction section, acting temporary pay, and special duties pay. And finally, we have contract language changes that don't have a financial impact. The first one is staffing, we added a staffing section this year, and this memorializes current pay, current practices to better define normal daily staffing. We added a re-opener language for the fire prevention base pay, if necessary, once the city receives the hay study. Daylight savings, language is changed to keep the contract compliant with federal labor laws. Annual leave, the parties agreed to remove minimum vacation to be taken by the employee. A provision was added for emergency annual leave, this does not increase amount given to any given employee and is just a subset of our current accrual. And finally, the last change was made to sick, sick leave, to clarify consecutive sick leave days, and to match the current forty-eight ninety-six schedule. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Mindy? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up to the public, anybody in the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Looking for a motion. Ms. Dare.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the International Association of Firefighters Local number one-two-six-five for the period of July first, 2017, to June thirtieth, 2018.
Ms. Abbott.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks, Mindy.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to planning and zoning, there are none comments. I'll open up the public comment, period, anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments from city council and city manager. Any comments? Ms. Bybee.
I, I just wanted to, and Tracy's gone, but just wanted to give a big shout-out to Parks and Rec and Special Events for Pumpkinpalooza yesterday, it was awesome, just great weather, perfect weather, and really, a thank you to the three hundred, more than three hundred volunteers that made that happen, run beautifully. My son and daughter-in-law showed up with my two grandkids, and we played all the carnival games, which I hadn't done before, and they just had a blast, it was just such a great, it's what downtown Sparks and what Sparks is about, it's about families and family-friendly events, and couldn't, couldn't have been better. And Mr. Abbott stole the show as best dressed, but I will have to say I have bragging rights for the council, because I took second place, Parks and Rec took first, but I took second place in pumpkin derby for the city, and Donald was fifth. So, just a shout-out, and thank you so much for all the people and all the hard work.
Ms. Dare, did you have something?
Well, two quick things, one is, I want to comment on that, but we have a picture we'd like to put up. I think that's important.
Oh, take it down, take it down.
There you go, so, you should wear that outfit more often, Donald, I'm very proud of you. So, actually, I got to go down there and see it, and I did not get to race this year, I said I was going to, but I will do my best to be there and beat you next year, so no worries. Secondly, we have our Nevada Veterans Memorial Dinner coming up, and we want to invite everybody out, so November second, just to remind you, this memorial will honor, we have almost nine hundred names from the state of Nevada that will go on this wall, and this wall will actually be right here at the marina, but it's statewide memorial, and it's something that'll be fantastic, it'll honor those veterans who gave their life, but then also, it also is, is quite an educational piece for our kids, for the next generation, they'll get to come and, and see what it is that was sacrificed for them by seeing every battle we've been in, and it's gonna be an awesome piece, but our fundraiser is on November second, please, go to NevadaVeteransMemorial dot, NevadaVeteransMemorial.org, and that'll get you where you need to go, NevadaVeteransMemorial.org, and we're just excited. And if you want to get involved, if you're a business, you want an in-kind donation, whatever, we're pretty excited about that, and look forward to seeing all come together. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Kronk, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, no further comments, without objection, we are adjourned.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, October twenty-third, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
I'll be back in.
I'll be back.
Martini, absent. Dare?
Here.
Assistant Chief Administrative Officer Kronk?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, ooh, item three for public comment, do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda, item four-point-one, looking for an approval of the agenda. Ms. Abbott?
Present.
Okay, I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Member Dare, okay, please vote. Motion carries with four votes. Let's move on to the minutes, item five-point-one, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of September twenty-fifth, 2017. Do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve? Ms. Dare?
I move to approve the minutes, as they are.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
Agency member Abbott, I have a second, please vote. Okay, motion carries with four votes. Item six-point-one, business items, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of September seventh, 2017, through October fourth, 2017. Looking for motion to approve. Member Abbott?
I move to approve the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers.
Thank you, do I have a second? Member Dare?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, motion carries with four votes. Item six-point-two, consideration and possible approval of amendment number one to the parking agreement, AC SRA three-fifteen, between the Sparks Redevelopment Agency, the City of Sparks, and Sayufi Enterprises, that extends terms of the agreement and grants Sayufi the right to construct an entrance in the western exterior wall of the parking structure. And I have Mr. Ornelas.
Chairwoman Bybee, members of the Redevelopment Agency, I am Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. This is the item that was considered by the, and approved by the city council on October ninth. It provides for an extension, if you will, of the date by which Sayufi Enterprises, in conjunction with Galaxy Theaters, must complete their renovations to the theater in order to extend the parking agreement whereby they're provided free parking in the city-owned garage. Again, it's a ninth-month extension from September thirtieth, 2018, or through September thirtieth, 2018, and then there's also a provision in the amendment that would permit Sayufi to install direct entrance between the theater and the parking structure to facilitate access for their patrons. So, again, this is an agreement that both the city council and the, or the city and the Redevelopment Agency are party to, the city council has approved it, and so it's before you today for Redevelopment Agency action.
Okay, thank you. Do I have questions for Mr. Ornelas? Okay, seeing no questions, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Dare?
I move to approve amendment number one to the parking agreement between the Sparks Redevelopment Agency, the City of Sparks, and Sayufi Enterprises.
Do I have a second? Member Abbott?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, seven-point-one, comments from the public, do I have any public comments? Seeing none, I'll move on to item seven-point-two, comments from the agency, anyone has comments? Our chief administrative chair, we have none, we are adjourned.